The December 6th meeting of the HRA City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Prior to the start of each council meeting, we have an opportunity for residents to address us on issues related to city government. Our council meetings are generally the first and third Tuesdays of each month, and the open podium period of time is from approximately 6:30 to 6:55. If you're interested in having a scheduled time so that you're sure to address us at that time, please contact the City Manager's Office at 949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, then I will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. These portions of the meeting are not recorded or televised. If you have any questions, again, please contact the City Manager's Office. We'll start off by calling the HRA meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho.
Here.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom.
Here.
Councilmember Case.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Chair Tara Lookins.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the HRA meeting held on September 6th, 2016?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to correct in those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion to adopt a resolution to approve the proposed 2017 HRA property tax levy to be $200,000 and accept the 2017 HRA budget of $200,000? Mr. Getcho, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
Mayor, I'll just, I'll simply mention that you set this preliminary levy in September, and this is the time for final approval. When we get to the regular entire city budget, we have a presentation and a public hearing. But when it relates to the HRA levy, it's a $200,000 levy, which has remained the same for many, many years. And almost all of the levy is staff time and labor costs related to our housing programs and CDBG programs, other programs related to the HRA. But we can certainly answer any questions you may have. But this is following up on the approval of the preliminary levy that was done in September.
Okay, any questions for staff? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution to approve of the proposed 2017 property tax levy to be $200,000 and accept the proposed 2017 budget of $200,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn the HRA.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
HRA is adjourned. First item on the council agenda is approval of the agenda and other items of business. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Anything to add, Mr. Getcho?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I have one item. It's golden rod on your desk. It is our list of all of our licenses that we would like to approve for next year. The item did not get in the physical printed packet, but this is something you've done every year, and you can see it's approval of all licenses in the city, kennel licenses, liquor licenses, cigarette, tobacco, and other licenses. So we'd like to add that to the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else? Did we have a motion? Ms. Nelson, did we already have a motion on the agenda?
Yes, we did have a motion.
And a second? Okay, all in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the council minutes from our workshop held Tuesday, November 15?
So moved.
Second.
Any items to correct there? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from our city council workshop, pardon me, our city council meeting held that same date?
Move approval.
Do you want to second it?
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Nelson, a second by Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom. Any items to correct in those minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Consent calendar, items A through J, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to pull for discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. First public hearing tonight is Prestige Daycare. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Our first item is a site plan review. As you know, as you can see in the packet, that is the only action tonight. If approved, the staff would prepare a development agreement with council conditions to come back at a later date. This site plan review is on three acres of unplanted land owned by the Metropolitan Airports Commission on a total 35-acre parcel. The request before you tonight is to operate or build, build and operate a daycare on the site at the location southeast corner of Pioneer Trail and Mitchell Road. The applicant is proposing to build an approximate 11,000-square-foot, single-story building. And you may recall that this property was rezoned by the city council in 2014 to airport commercial. The building complies with all site plan and architectural requirements. There are no waivers or variances being requested with this project. The project proponent is here to provide a brief overview of the project, and the staff and the project proponent can answer any questions that you may have regarding the site plan.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Fanning. I am with Shingabe Real Estate and Shingabe Builders. We're actually the general contractor and developer for the project on behalf of Prestige Preschool. What I can do is, if it's help, I can show a, just kind of an overview of what we're talking about regarding the site.
You can use a microphone over there, too.
So the site, as you mentioned, is located southeast corner of Pioneer Trail and Mitchell Road. Basically, the site we're talking about, it's a three-acre site. Our development portion of it is about an acre and a half. This is a project that is really a kind of a joint venture with MAC. We are not acquiring the land. It's a long-term ground lease because I think as most people understand, is MAC doesn't want to control that land over the period of time as it relates to the airport. So the improvements that we're doing are really kind of on the northern portion of that property. That's going to include 11,000-square-foot building, possibly just a little under 60,000 square feet as it relates to the project. Overall, as it relates to the tenant and kind of who we are, again, Shingabe Builders, we're a developer, general contractor, been around the metro area for about 35 years. Our relationship with Prestige actually dates back about four years. This is going to be the sixth facility that we've developed or under construction within the Twin Cities area. We currently, and Prestige currently has a location operating in Apple Valley and Brooklyn Park. And then we currently have a project under construction in Minnetoka, Maple Grove. We just started construction in Eagan, and then this would be our sixth facility. Overall, from Prestige's standpoint, is that they'd like to have between eight and 12 facilities within the Twin Cities area. So we're really kind of getting to that, a little bit of that bottom threshold and get a better understanding. As far as Prestige, Prestige is an operations based out of California. And what they will do is they will actually, we will own the building, and then they will be a tenant in our building for a period of time. Again, as I mentioned, this is a lease relationship with MAC, so we actually have a 50-year ground lease. And so our relationship is, is we will own the building and then lease that to Prestige Preschool. From a standpoint is, the building, again, is about 11,000 square feet. Typically, when we start to look at the buildings as a whole, the occupancy and the licensing capacity is going to be based on not only the square footage, but the teacher-to-student ratio, which is really dictated by the state of Minnesota as it relates to childcare and the operations. If we look back at the other facilities, they're typically licensed for around 180 kids. And so that's really what the focus is. Also, when you truly understand the operations of preschools, is they typically don't operate at 100% capacity, because what that does is that doesn't give them the ability to move children from one room to another based on, you know, again, if they turn two or turn three, they're going to move from the two-year-old up to the next room. So they want to have the ability to move kids. So typically, they're going to operate at about a 50, excuse me, about a 75% to 85% capacity to allow that room. So it's typically, they're going to operate about 150 kids at their, at their full potential. Again, they have the licensing capacity to go higher, but it's going to depend on, obviously, the children, their child-to-teacher ratio. A little history, we've been looking actually within the Eden Prairie area for about, since 2014. We've looked at a couple different sites, really talked with staff. This one really came up in probably the latter part of 2015 is when we really started discussions with MAC. And then since then, it's really progressed. As far as just the facility as a whole, again, 11,000 square feet, and really focused on infants from six years all the way up to kindergarten, and then we do have some after-school care as well. From an operational standpoint, it'll be a Monday-through-Friday operations, really no weekends at all. And then usually, operational hours are between 6:30 a.m. till 6, to 6:30 p.m. If you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them as it relates to the project or the facility itself.
Great, thank you. Any questions for proponent?
What kind of traffic do you anticipate, you know, that would be generated as a result of the daycare facility?
You know, I mean, we always joke is, is the traffic's really going to be generated by the drop-off and pickup later in the day, but at the, early in the morning, later in the day. But because of the hours, the way it operates and the type of classes they are, you are going to have some classroom that, and children that are going to only come half-day, that maybe only come a couple hours during the day. So your main traffic patterns are going to be morning and evening, but, you know, again, it's not all at 8 o'clock or all at 7:30, so it's really going to vary between 6:30 and 10, and then 3 to 6, but then you're still going to have kind of regular. So from a standpoint, looking at the use and compared to what was there and originally planned from an office, it's actually probably the same, if not less, than what the use was originally planned.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
I've got one for staff.
Okay.
My question is, is, do they have, I know they have enough parking for daycare, but since this is being built by your company, currently for a daycare, but, you know, everybody knows if some business doesn't go in some location, then some other business probably comes in, not necessarily daycare. Do we have enough parking in this for any use that's likely to go into this building?
There is some flexibility, however, generally what we do in the development agreement is tie it to the use if we feel there could be a parking issue with a higher intensity use, and we have done that in the past with daycares. So they might have to make some changes to the site and, you know, potentially to the building if they wanted to bring in another use. But obviously, they're, they've met our code requirements for the daycare.
Was I reading the plans right, that they have trees in the parking lot, so there's shaded parking and such, or was I looking?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand, trees in the parking lot?
I was looking over the plans. I wasn't quite sure in the parking lot if it's just I was seeing lighting, or if in fact, there were, you know, trees here and there through the parking lot.
Right, I believe they are meeting our requirements for the 5% landscaping in the parking lot, which does include trees. It can't just be rock or hardcover. It has to be landscaping. I believe there are trees, as I recall, yes.
Yes, there are trees.
Excellent.
One thing to clarify, too, on the parking, I mean, with this, with this being a three-acre site, we do have a relationship and have discussed this with MAC, is that if the parking needs increase, or maybe the use change, I mean, we're basically using an acre and a half of the three acres. Again, there's a small portion of it that is by, from the stormwater retention and detention side. So there is an area, if this would ever be, this building be repositioned and we need to increase the parking, there is the ability to do that as well with the additional land that's not being used.
Excellent.
Anything else?
Okay, Mr. Case.
Doesn't turn the right way. Janet, just a question. I know this is a site plan review, but in terms of specificity, like you mentioned the trees, are we approving the amount of trees, not, I mean, obviously not placement yet, or like, I had a question about how will we delineate the property from what the, it's not city-owned, it's all airport-owned, but from the city fields, and what kind of fence and, again, privacy. I like the fact that the parking lot is set back in terms of the neighbors on the north side, both directly and then northwest a little bit. But are we looking at screening it, are we getting to that kind of detail on this one tonight? That's what I'm asking.
We are. They do have a landscaping plan, so the improvements that you see would be our expectations. And if there's anything in addition that you would like to see, this would definitely be the time to raise that and ask for anything additional. With regard to the screening of the park property, I don't know if Jay perhaps wants to speak to that.
I don't know if I meant, said screening. I was just more thinking what kind of fence would go between.
And I don't recall specific fence details. Would you have?
I'm assuming you'd want, I'm assuming the daycare would want to have some.
Yeah, as part of, as part of the design of kind of the playground and open play area, there is a wrought iron fence, so it's a decorative fence that's planned for that separation, and obviously from a security standpoint as well.
Okay. And then there's a daycare on city-owned property over by our fire station on Dell that I've had a few, not a whole lot, so maybe it's not a big deal, but a few neighbor concerns, not about the bright lights from the daycare shining into their area, but just that it's so bright. And I think it's changed over the last year. But when I did drive by it, probably seven, eight months ago, just a lot of lighting at nighttime with nobody in there. And so I just wonder, that kind of an issue here, I mean, do we have any, are we looking at that kind of a detail in terms of how bright will this corner be lit up at 9 o'clock at night without anybody there? Because that, even though the lights will be downcast and we control all that, it still is shining, you know, over to the neighbors across the street.
Right. I do believe that we have limits on the intensity of the lighting at the property line in addition to the cutoff, so with regard to the fixtures, so that it's not shining into upper-story windows and that kind of thing. But I will double-check and make sure that we have that covered before it comes back to you again.
And the signage, again, is it backlit, or I mean, is it, because that, the sign sitting way out there could potentially be problematic if it was very bright.
Signage is not part of this package. That would have to come through a separate sign permit. So anything, and they are showing some conceptual areas, but no details on that. Did find that there is a fence detail that is pretty difficult to see, and I think that may be specifically around the playground area. But it is a black, it looks something like a wrought iron with vertical features, and that's one of the elevation drawings. You'll see a very small diagram in the corner if you have that in your package.
One of the things that's unique with this, too, is because it's on airport property and because of the proximity, we had to go through a review process with the FAA as it relates to the building, the lighting, all of those things. So that is really going to be regulated even more so by FAA, which we basically have met those concerns.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on Prestige Daycare?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and direct staff to prepare a development, incorporate, development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, and welcome to Eden Prairie. First and second reading of an ordinance updating fee schedule for administration of official controls and resolution approving summary ordinance for publication. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, as is very customary at the last meeting of the year, we need to set our fees for the next year. So we have, we have two public hearings for two different types of fees. This public hearing has to do with fees that are set by ordinance. And you will notice that we do have a first and second reading, so this action does require a unanimous vote on the part of the council for these to become effective yet by 2017. You'll see with the other fees, that's just a resolution, but I just want to make you aware of that, and we've done that in the past, two readings in one evening. These fees, as you can see in the packet, are related to building code, building inspection, and development fees. So we show what those fees are and the comparisons of the fees from 2016 to 2017. And you will see, as you will see in the fees coming up, in the utility fees and others, that we have very modest inflationary increases planned. And we can certainly answer any questions that, that you may have related to setting these fees for next year in those areas.
Thank you. Any questions for staff on the fee schedule? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on fees?
Seeing no one, I would move to close the public hearing and approve the first and second readings of the ordinance updating the fee schedule for administration of official controls and adopt resolution approving the summary for publication.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item, as you referenced, is the 2017 fee schedule for city services. It's a resolution.
Thank you, Mayor. This, as you can see in the packet, this area covers all the fees that are set by resolution. It does not require a public hearing, but for the past several years, we have chosen to publish and hold a public hearing for any change, any increase, or not, in any fee throughout the city. So you can see in this package, you have everything from community center membership to daily usage fees, to fees for copies, to fees at the city cemetery, recreation fees, athletic fees, various fees that the, that the city has that is evaluated by each division in the city and then brought forward to you in all those different areas, as I mentioned, from utilities to engineering to police, to park and recreation throughout the city. So again, we do hold a public hearing, and the action is simply approval of a resolution, and staff can certainly answer any questions you may have on individual fees.
Any questions for staff? Okay, is there a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, this is public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to address the council on the fees by resolution?
Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing and adopt the 2017 fee resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The final thing for public hearings is certifying the 2017 property tax levy, adopting the 2017 budget, and consenting and approving 2017 HRA tax levy. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As I mentioned with the HRA levy, we set a preliminary levy in September, and tonight is that time that the council needs to take action on adopting the budget and the tax levy and approving of the HRA levy for 2017. Again, we hold a public hearing for that. Notice is provided to each property taxpayer in the entire city well in advance of the meeting through Hennepin County about tonight's meeting. And so as is customary, the finance supervisor and myself will provide a presentation on our proposed budget, and then we will hold a public hearing following that. So Tammy Wilson, our finance supervisor, will cover the first half, and I will come in and cover the second half of our presentation.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor and members of the council. I am pleased to present to you tonight the 2017 budget. The purpose of tonight's public meeting is to solicit public input on the city's proposed tax levy and budget for the next year. And it is a requirement by the state, and it needs to be held after property owners have received their property tax statements for 2017. Some other public entities that are holding meetings are Hennepin County, which held theirs on November 29th. The school district will be holding theirs on December 12th, and Metropolitan Council will be holding theirs on December 14th. And the state of Minnesota is not required to hold a public meeting. So for 2017, we do see an increase of market value of 2.5%, which brings our market value to approximately $9.9 billion. And we do project for 2018, this market value to be over $10 billion, which will bring us in line to what our market values were before the recession. So for 2017, we are proposing a budget increase of approximately $1.2 million, or a 2.7% increase over the 2016 budget. And so for the general fund for revenues, we are proposing a 1 point, approximately a 1.2% in, or $1.2 million increase, or a 2.8% increase over the 2016 budget. And property taxes would be increasing $940,767, and charges for services would be increasing $277,584, which is due mainly to an increase of memberships now that the pool construction expansion is complete at the community center. And then as you can see, the other revenue items are pretty flat. This is the second year of a two-year budget. And also to note, licenses and permits, that, too, is flat. And what we usually do is, in the first year of our budget, we increase permit revenue by 6%, and then for the second year, keep that line item flat. And then this chart just shows the breakdown of the general fund revenue, and as you can see, property taxes make a large, make up a large portion of our revenue at 73%, followed by charges for services at 13%, licenses and permits, 8%, intergovernmental revenue, 3%, other revenue, 2, and then transfers in at 1%. So for 2017, we are proposing a, approximately a $1.2 million increase in general fund revenues, which is about a 2.7% increase over the 2016 budget. This budget for expenditures does maintain city services and does include the addition of one new police officer, and does include adjustments for wages and benefits. And then a line to note on here is administration. You can see that is decreasing $7,166, and that is due to 2017 being a non-election year, and so we were able to reduce our expenditures by approximately $100,000. So this next chart shows the breakdown of expenditures by department. Police make up, make up about 32% of the expenditures, followed by park and rec at 26%, public works 14%, fire 13%, admin 9%, community development 5, and then transfers So for the debt levy, we are proposing a decrease of $9,000, or a 0.4% decrease. And this is due mainly to the 2011 equipment certificate bonds being paid off in 2016. And we were also able to reduce the 2008 and 2009 equipment certificates levy due to available cash funds and changes in debt service payments. So for the property tax levy, we are proposing a $940,718 increase, or a 2.8% increase. This is an increase of $959,967 for the general fund, and $100,000 increase in the capital improvement fund, which is due to the bands that we saw in the 10-year capital improvement plan, which Sue will talk about later on. So for 2017, the median value home is valued at $363,100. And for that median value home, the city tax impact would be a $10 increase, or a 0.8% increase. For an apartment with a $5 million value, they would see an increase of $2,043, or 11%. And for commercial property with a $2 million value, they would see a decrease of $109, or 1.3%. So for the total property tax, which includes the city, the county, the state, and the school, and other agencies, a median value home would see a decrease of $28, or 0.6%. And this decrease is due mainly to the decrease in the Hennepin County tax. Apartments would see an increase of $6,974, and commercial property would see a decrease So this next slide is the breakdown of how the money is distributed for a median value home. Hennepin County would receive 35%, the city would receive 25%, the school district 33%, and then other entities 7%. And for a commercial property, Hennepin County receives 16%, the city receives 11%, the state 26%, school district 14%, fiscal disparities 31%, and other entities 4%. So for the median value home that has a city tax of $1,194, the monthly cost of city services would be $99.50, with $93.69 going to the general fund, and $5.81 going to the debt and capital funds. Last year, the median value home had a monthly cost of city services of $98.66. And then this next slide just shows the $93.69 that is going to the general fund, the breakdown of the different departments that it goes to, with police receiving $29.83, park and rec $24.26, public works $13.38, fire $12.45, admin $8.74, and then community development at $5.3. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rick.
Thank you, Tammy. She did a great job of providing kind of that detailed overview of the budget and the numbers. I just want to spend some time kind of going to a little bit of a higher level and then do some comparisons and some analysis on the proposed budget and tax levy. To say first that if you look at this slide, this talks about the process this year. Putting a budget together is a year-long process, and actually in Eden Prairie, it's a two-year process. We do a two-year budget, but this is just a snapshot of the time that we spent this year on the budget. But if you take a step back, and history repeats itself, because we're getting into that process now, if you look at being in the second year of a two-year budget, that 2017 will be, that the 2016 and 2017 budget preparation actually began near the end of 2014 into early 2015 with the results of our quality-of-life survey. And that's coming up again at the end of this year into 2017, where we survey our residents to ask about the levels of service that we're providing, and how we're doing, and what the expectations are of our community. So in that survey quickly, and this is, again, about two years old, and we're in the middle of doing this again right now, some of the key findings that we built into our budget were that our residents do enjoy a high quality of life and expect that, and they value the services that they receive, and they rate them highly. So that's an indication, when you sit down with the city council and talk about building your next two-year budget, you start from the place of what your residents are expecting and asking of their services. And then there are a few more areas. Our natural environment and the park and recreation programming and the outdoor amenities that exist are important, and the fact that people feel safe in this community is huge. So you go into thinking about building your budget based on that, and then there are some strategic planning that's done, work planning at the department and division level, and then you start putting together that two-year budget. And then even though you adopt the two-year budget, each and every year, we need to come back and work on the tax levy and budget annually, and there are changes. So I'll go over some of the changes that occurred. But before I do that, what came out of that budget planning then, or what are some of the goals that you build into a budget? Before you get to even the numbers, you need to look at the services that you're providing, and you want to have some goals. And in our case, for '16 and '17, the upcoming budget, it was to enhance service levels in public safety, and infrastructure was very important. So Tammy mentioned the one new officer in '17. There was also a new officer added in 2016. And the council did spend quite a bit of time hearing from our police department about, you know, some of the challenges in the police service in the last few years with issues related to trafficking and to, you know, identity theft, and just a lot of specialized areas and investigations where we need to put more resources. It was also important to preserve service levels in all other areas and to maintain employee morale and engagement. And I think that's evidenced by our third, I believe it's third or fourth consecutive year of being the only city that's considered a top workplace, according to the Star Tribune, a survey of the people that work here on the workplace that they're in. And also, what's built into our culture is a continual review of our service efficiencies and innovations. So I think many of you have been able to mention that we can show you concrete dollars in savings that can equate to 1%, 2% of the budget, whether it would be energy savings initiatives, whether it be other service delivery initiatives where we're able to do more with the same, or in some cases, we are able to do a little bit more with less. And that does definitely add to our bottom line. In fact, you're going to hear at next year's meeting about another award that we received from the Humphrey Institute, I believe it was, for a service efficiency that we have. And then it's also important to talk about that value proposition and how we compare in our services to comparable cities. Every city needs to provide police and fire, water, sewer, many of the same services, but we want to do that at a value and at a very good price. And then lastly, two goals that were built into building this budget the last two years was to continue to preserve our exceptional image internally and externally. And Money Magazine stating that we're the number-two best city to live in is a good reflection of that. We now hold the number-one, the number-two, and the number-three positions over the last six years. So that's one good barometer. And then a newer item we had was to enhance our sense of community. And I think we built some initiatives into the budget for placemaking and for sense of community, the entry monument sign project. And you're going to see the first entry monument signs being built this winter and into next year. Our public art initiatives, the design guideline and design standards initiatives, that's the last item tonight, I think plays into that sense of community and our image as well. So those are some of the goals that were built into those numbers that Sue, Tammy talked about. And then next, I want to mention that value proposition. There are 18 other cities currently that are in a similar coalition of Minnesota cities, the municipal legislative commission, that we've continually ranked, you know, either the bottom two or three. Chanhasan is a newer community that comes in near the bottom on the city tax. So you remember that when the tax bill is received by residents, it's only 1/4 of that bill is the city, but that 1/4 continues to be in the lower, I would argue, 15%. I haven't checked on all the cities throughout the metro area of Minnesota, but I could testify to being in the lower 15, for sure 20% of all cities, when it comes to city taxes. And then when it comes to the levy, I did note an error in here, so while we are live and in person, I'm going to correct an error. We are not 3% on the levy. It's 2.8%. So you can see we compare favorably with our peers in terms of a tax levy. We obviously don't set our tax levy in relation to what anyone else is doing. This is a matter of, once we get through that process, it's always good to check and see what's happening around us. So we think that that's also very competitive. And again, it's not any type of race to the bottom. It's simply setting a budget with priorities and goals and looking to be efficient and provide a high level of service. And we've been able to continue to do that with a levy that's consistently been kind of at or under that 3% mark. And then finally, what I like to talk about, some of the factors that affect the budget. And in the last few years, I've talked about fiscal disparities, and this is a commercial tax base sharing program. LGA is something we talk about as well, and we talked about that with our legislators, that we do not receive any state aid, or very little state aid. We receive some state aid for police and fire pensions, but general local government aid, we don't receive. But there's also a program throughout the seven-county metro where a percentage of the growth of the commercial property base goes into a pool and is then sent back out to communities. And we've been the number-two contributor to that pool after Bloomington for the last several years. And the effect that has on the median value home that's simply important from a transparency point of view is that property taxes on that median value home would be $1,000 or 9% less if that program didn't exist. And there's an argument to be made that cities aren't trying to compete with other cities to take businesses from cities. So the idea is if we share in some of that growth in property tax base regionally, it benefits the entire region, and we understand that with transportation and with a lot of service delivery. But just from a transparency perspective, not a judgment on the program, it does affect the bottom line of our taxpayers, and we think it's important that everybody know that. So with that being said, the numbers that Tammy provided and the overview that I provided, we're very comfortable and feeling in a very good place with the budget that we have for 2017. We're ready to get to work on the '18 and '19 budget when our survey results come back. But if you think about kind of the area that we cover and the people and the businesses that we provide service to, I actually think back to, just this morning, we had a presentation at a Rotary meeting from the president of the University of Minnesota, and he had a slide that showed value is cost divided by excellence divided by cost. And we feel that, for us, we're trying to provide that high value with high levels of excellent service at a very reasonable cost, and that that ratio is something that we think that this budget reflects. So with that, we have a public hearing, but prior to that, Mayor and Council, we could answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Very good overview of both the budget and the city tax levy. Any questions for staff? Would there be a motion, please?
I can find it.
We'll get there.
Yep, I'll get there. So I would move to adopt the resolution certifying the 2017 property tax levy to be $35,711,841, and approve the 2017 budget of $47,130,983, as reviewed by the council, and consent and approve the 2017 HRA tax levy and budget of $200,000. Am I reading something in error?
Well, no, this is under public hearings. The document doesn't ask for a closing of the public hearing, so I think I missed that. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on the budget or the levy? Okay. So can you add closing the public hearing to your motion, please?
And I would move to close the public hearing, seeing that no one chose to give testimony. I think that's the entire motion.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval of payment of claims as submitted.
Any items to question? Roll call, please. Councilmember O'Hara?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Terrell O'Kins?
Aye.
Under reports of city manager, we have two items. The first is a resolution authorizing issuance of $4.09 million in general obligation bonds. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We do have the need to issue some general obligation bonds for some projects that occurred in 2016, mainly the water tower recoding, West 70th improvements, and bonds that are going to refinance some prior work on Flying Cloud Drive. So we have a resolution that's needed tonight. We have representatives from our financial advising firm, Ellers and Associates, that will provide a report on the bond issuance and the information related to that.
I'm Bruce Kimmel with Ellers, and it's my pleasure to be with you to give you a brief overview of the bond sale that we coordinated on your behalf today, as well as the affirmation of the city's two AAA ratings by both Standard &amp; Poor's and Moody's Investor Service. I think you all have the report now. I'll be just hitting a few highlights from this sale day report. As you're aware, this bond issue encompasses three distinct purposes. One is to fund the recoding of one of your water towers and will be repaid with water revenues. The next is the West 70th Street project, and will be paid 100% with special assessments levied against the beneficiaries of that project. And the third is a refunding of your existing 2008 B bonds, which is also a special assessment bond. And those bonds will also be repaid entirely with special assessments. So there's really no levy impact from this bond issue. And really, the purpose of the refunding is just to achieve interest cost savings, exchanging the old rates for new rates, and achieving net savings for the community. So I'll just hit a few points here. We did receive six bids on the city's behalf earlier today, and those bids are shown on pages three through six of the report. I would point out that the winning bid came from FTN Financial Capital Markets out of Memphis, with a true interest rate of just under 2.3%. And you'll note that the cover bid, or second-place bid from Citigroup, was one basis point, or 0.01% higher. So very aggressive bidding between numbers one and two, and they were followed by Doherty here in Minneapolis, Wells Fargo, RW Baird, and Stiefel Nicholas. And we see bids on bonds like this from all of these groups. So they're regular participants in the market and very strong interest in today's bond sale from the city. A few other key points. This bond issue went out to market with a par amount of $4,090,000, and you'll see the final amount is $3,940,000. And so please do note that in the resolution that you'll be considering. The reason for this decrease of $150,000 is because FTN's bid was what's called a premium bid. And so you'll see back on that bid tabulation, the coupon rates on these bonds are mostly in the mid-2% to 3% range, but the actual yields that the investors will be receiving range from 1.2% to 2.7%. So basically, the winning bidder said, "We want to have coupons on the bonds that are higher, but we know that the actual value to the investors will be lower." So the way that happens is they offered more money for the bonds than the bonds went out to the market with. What we were able to do is take those extra proceeds and reduce the amount of the bond issue. So you still have the amount of money. You need to do the water tower project, the 70th Street project, and the refunding, and that's why we were able to reduce the bond size. So in case you're wondering how that bit of magic occurred there.
Wow.
So the motion will actually...
Very exciting, right?
The motion will actually reflect in the $3 million figure, nine...
Please do, yes. And then also on the refunding, I should point out that even though you only have seven years left on the 2008 B bonds, the net-net savings to the city is just under $100,000 from that refunding. And that equates to, on a present value basis, 7.3% of the old debt service, which is a very strong refunding result as well. So with that, I'll skip ahead to page seven, and I just want to draw your attention to the final results. I won't go through these in laborious detail, but page seven is the sources and uses of funds for the three purposes that I outlined before. And you can see how these numbers add up, including the fact that the city is applying $200,000 toward the refunding component, that refunding of the 2008 B bonds. Those are prepaid assessments that the city finance director thought appropriate to apply to reduce the amount of the refunding. Then you can see the next page, page eight, is the amalgamation of the three... Then you can see the next page, page eight, is the amalgamation of the three purposes that the debt service on those three purposes over the next 15 years. And they all have different terms, as I'll get to in a moment, but the bond investors don't really care what the debt structure looks like. They just really want the city's AAA rating and to know what's happening at each annual interval. So even though it's, it's kind of a mess on a combined basis, that's really not a problem for the market. And from the city's perspective, the next three pages are what's really important. So on page nine, you can see the water tower debt service over the next 10 years, and that's about $183,000 per year, which I understand meets the city's planning targets for this debt service. Page 10 shows the debt service on the West 70th project. That is spread out over 15 years, and again, is paid exclusively with special assessments. And you can see that because it's roughly level principal payments, that debt service actually declines over 15 years as the amount of interest goes down. And then finally, the refunding, as the next several pages, starting on page 11, we show the new debt service over the next seven years on page 11, and then a comparison to the old debt service on page 12, and that's where you can see on a net basis, on the right-hand column, the $100,000 of savings to the city. And then finally, for purpose of comparison, the debt service that's being taken out is on page 12, or excuse me, page 13, and you can see the substantially higher interest rates in the 4% range that are being eliminated with this refinancing. Are there any questions about these results before I touch briefly on the city's rating So then, Mayor and Councilmembers, great news to affirm with the city's ratings, AAA affirmed by both Moody's and Standard and Poor's. We included just the Moody's report here, but the S&amp;P report is also available from city staff. And I have to say, this is my first time going through the rating process with the city staff, and your staff does an excellent job of preparing. Sue and Tammy were both intricate, intricately involved with research and preparing for the analyst's questions, and the questions are much more detailed than they used to be. You recall that the rating agencies got into some trouble with the financial recession, and since then, they've really become much more scrupulous and, and detailed in the analysis that they do, which is a good thing. But it means more work on the front end for staff, and your group does a great job. And then they were also joined by Rick and Janet, who added great commentary on the city's economic development and overall demographics. So really, you can see there's real, I won't go into much detail here, and please read this at your leisure, but Moody's looked at your economy, the strength of your tax base, your very strong financial operations and reserve levels, and then your very modest debt burden with limited well-thought-out borrowing plans. They looked at pension liability, but that's really an overall state liability. There's not a whole lot you can do at the local level about that, and really saw very little that could threaten the city's AAA rating. You'd have to see a significant deterioration in your tax base, and that's not likely to happen anytime soon. So again, I would just like to extend kudos to your, your team here and to the decision-making that you do as the elected officials in keeping the city strong. It makes our job in, in helping defend your AAA rating very easy.
Good.
Any questions about that before I let you consider the resolution?
Questions? I don't think so. Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yeah, very glad to hear that we got that AAA bond rating again, and thank you, Tammy and Sue, for all of your hard work to get that accomplished. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution authorizing issuance, awarding sale, prescribing the form and details, and providing for the payment of $3,940,000 general obligation bonds, Series 2016A.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item under the City Manager's report is a resolution approving the 2017 to 2026 CIP Capital Improvement Plan. Mr. Gettle.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is also something you spent some time throughout the year in workshop discussing in detail. In every other year, we approve a 10-year capital improvement program, capital improvement plan. So our finance manager, Sukh Achiv, will be providing a presentation on our CIP, and then we are available for questions, and then the request is to adopt a resolution approving the new and updated 2017 to 2026 Capital Improvement Plan.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am pleased to present some information on our Capital Improvement Plan. The objectives of the plan, we plan for capital improvements by preparing the plan, and we provide, it provides consistent investment in city equipment facilities and infrastructure, and it preserves and expands capital in a way that is sustainable and affordable for Eden Prairie citizens. So some policies that we try to follow when we're working with our capital is we try to confine long-term borrowing that, for projects that can't be financed from other revenues. And when we do issue long-term debt, we like to make sure that we'll pay back the debt over the, over the life of the project and no longer. We try to maintain a sound relationship with all the bond rating agencies to ensure our low interest rates, and we try to undertake actions and act in a way and have policies and such in place to ensure our good bond rating. So we do maintain a 10-year plan for all projects that are over $25,000, and we update that plan every other year, and liquor profits are a dedicated funding source of the Capital Improvement Program. So as you can see, the CIP is totals $276 million over 10 years. That's about $10 million more than the last time we updated the CIP. Public Works or Engineering just happens to be about $10 million more. It's the largest area at about $188 million for different road and infrastructure improvements. Other areas have pluses and minuses, but it nets to about $10 million. Some of the larger other areas are water utility for $21.3 million, parks and recreation for $16.8 million, and facilities for $13.6 million. And this is a summary of how we pay for the projects. So about $45 million of the projects come from the city's enterprise funds. That includes the city's water sewer and Storm Draydon's utility. So those projects are paid through from charges to the customers that use those utilities. We also have about $3 million out of tax increment financing funds, and then about $87.8 million from other city funds, which I'll explain in more detail on the next slide. And then there's $139 million of other funding sources to come to that total of $276 million. So this is the internal sources that the city uses to pay for capital projects. The top one is the pavement management fund. So each household and business in Eden Prairie pays a franchise fee each month on their electric and gas bill, and that money comes to help pay for road maintenance and infrastructure. And this is, the city has chosen to do it this way, so we don't have to assess individual property owners every time we need to repave the road in front of their house. So it's a nice way that we do that for citizens. The next largest funding source is the Capital Maintenance and Reinvestment Fund, and that's the fund that pays for projects that doesn't have another funding source. So the revenues that go into there include liquor profit, some rental income antenna revenue, the tax levy goes into there. So we use those funds to pay for projects without a specific funding source. We do have $8 million in debt in the Capital Improvement Fund, and that's not until 2025, and that includes either a substantial remodel or expansion of the police department. So there'll be conversations about that over the next few years. And the next large one is $5.4 million for the facilities internal service fund. So then again, the outcomes of the CIP include, it funds the $276 million in projects, $137 million from city funds, and $139 million from other funds, no new tax levy for debt until 2024, and we maintain stable tax impacts. So again, we maintain our pavement management program. Oops, I have a couple of numbers here. So for pavement management, we have about $22.2 million for the maintenance of streets and about $5.5 million for reconstruction. It maintains the city's 31 buildings. There's about $800,000 budgeted for Riley Lake Park renovation in 2017. There's $3.5 million to maintain trails and sidewalks, and $3.6 million to add for new trails and sidewalks. It maintains parks, including tennis courts, play equipment, and parking lots. There's about $3.1 million for IT infrastructure and $1.1 million for public safety radios. Then we also maintain and expand our transportation. This is a list of some of the larger transportation projects, but again, there's about $188 million invested in transportation, and we also maintain our utility infrastructure. And again, we just talked about this, but again, with the AAA bond rating from Moody's and from S&amp;P, it just reaffirms that we're able to get the lowest interest rate when we do need to borrow money for our projects.
Thank you.
Yep.
Great presentation. Are there any questions for Mr. Achiv? Hearing none, or is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution approving the 2017 to 2026 Capital Improvement Plan Plan. Boy, I'm not reading well tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have a report from our Community Development Director, Ms. Jeremiah, on the approval of design guidelines.
Your Honor, Councilmembers, it's been a couple of years now since you held a visioning session and really launched the idea of updating our design guidelines for development. And since that time, we've spent a lot of time working with our Planning Commission. We had some interns initially, and then we hired Hey Dobbs to kind of take us the, the final mile on this initiative. And of course, you saw at second reading tonight, some of the associated ordinances for those parts of the design guidelines that will be required, and those have now passed through on second reading. But I'd like to have Tom Dobbs come up and give a little bit of an overview of the design guidelines document that incorporates not only those things that are required through ordinance for architecture and landscaping, et cetera, but also those things that are desired, encouraged, and will be incented, particularly if people need waivers or if they are coming in asking for any financial assistance from the city. Then you could see additional conditions of approval that actually come out of this document. And I'm proud to note that they include also sustainability and public art guidelines. And with that, I'll turn it over to Tom Dobbs.
Great. Well, thank you for having me. It's exciting to be here and finally see the project come to fruition after many months of good effort by you all, the Planning Commission and staff. And I really want to thank you for participating really wholeheartedly in this, from work sessions to the Planning Commission input, to solid staff input, expedited decision-making, thorough review, a lot of positive professional feedback. Makes our lives a lot easier. So on behalf of the consultant team, it's great to be here. I'm going to walk you through the portions of the present, portions of the guidelines, rather, and as Janet pointed out, the, the guidelines themselves are really meant to help architects, developers, the, the development community, understand what your expectations are. So in addition to the ordinance language, these really start to tell the story of what you're trying to do in terms of an overall community. The guidelines themselves are broken down into three major sections, introduction and overview, building design guidelines, and then landscape and site design guidelines. So in the introduction of the, of the document, there's a purpose statement, and the purpose statement really talks about raising expectations as a community. And it does so in a way that, again, is meant to be proactive, is meant to provide a roadmap for development and set the tone for developers and the development community when doing projects within the community. I should mention that the guidelines themselves do not address single-family residential, so they're meant to address largely commercial structures throughout the community of varying types and sizes. So in terms of describing those expectations, there's a variety of different components throughout that do that. We also reference the supporting planning documents, which are the zoning code itself, the city comprehensive plan, and then the Sustainable Eden Prairie Initiative, which you're in the process of doing right now. And this tries to weave all those three together into a meaningful whole. So the, the tone of the document is led by really starting to describe overall design principles and then project assumptions, so we understand where, where the basis of departure is when developing projects. So the guiding principles talk about several things, including development should be of high quality and aesthetically pleasing. The development should increase the overall livability of the city of Eden Prairie. The development should respond to the surrounding context and to be designed at human scale. So this addresses both viewing buildings from afar and also as one is near them and moving alongside them. That new development should follow sustainability principles for both the building and the site. We want to seek opportunities to introduce public art into buildings and into site design, and that sites and buildings should work together cohesively and synergistically. So again, we're looking at things not as little one-off pieces and parts, but how buildings and sites work together as cohesive developments, and how those developments fit within the context of the overall community and make it stronger. We also set the tone of the project or development by describing overall project assumptions. The assumption, one, is that guidelines should enhance, not inhibit, development. So these are not meant to be restrictive, they're not meant to be onerous, they're really meant to, again, indicate what the expectations are prior to development starting. That the guidelines will be built upon the strategic plan and will complement the city comprehensive plan and zoning code. The zoning code, again, as you know, is the teeth, it's really the, the enforceable component of this. This is really the more persuasive and suggestive portion that supplements that. We also talk about, and I think that's been manifested here tonight through discussions with your bond rating and your budget, that there is demand for development in Eden Prairie. And so this comes to the fore with the thought that you are coming from a place of strength, that you're not necessarily begging for development, but welcoming development, but that comes with expectation. So with the opportunity to develop comes the expectation of, of doing it at a very high level. Also, we talk about that there's, that streets, sidewalks, basically physical infrastructure, visible infrastructure, are really not being addressed by these guidelines. So that's really another piece. This address private development. Public infrastructure, public right-of-way components are not addressed within this document itself. As I mentioned, the rationale and objectives really describe how this interfaces with the other components that you have at your disposal, the zoning code in particular. So this is meant to frame the code, give someone some insights into how this is meant to guide and the zoning code enforces. Again, that we don't change, don't anticipate changing the infrastructure or addressing infrastructure with these guidelines. The one piece that should be noted is that the guidelines are universal to all building types, and that was probably one of the most difficult thing we wrestled with throughout the process, is that when we speak to overall guidelines, we're addressing multi-story, multi-tenant buildings on the one hand, and simultaneously, one-off standalone retail development. And so these are trying to address all of those in a fairly concise and manageable document. Document as a whole is about 35 pages, so we're not writing a tome, we're not giving people pieces, pages and pages they have to wade through. And therefore, there are going to be periodically contradictions and/or disparities between language that addresses development at various scales, various density in various locations throughout the community. We address that, too, that if contradictions occur, both in the reading of this or in, with respect to the actual zoning ordinance itself, the common sense should apply. So when we talk about walkability, we're really talking about the sidewalk, the public right-of-way, walking alongside a building. So if we're talking about a office industrial complex, which is largely vehicular, driven, automobile-oriented, obviously, we don't have as much need there for pedestrian amenities and walkability. So, so those things will occur, and I think staff has done a good job about acknowledging that, recognizing that the language will be used to describe the overall intent and then work through the overall review of project as they occur. So the, the document, as I said, is broken down into design guidelines for buildings and design guidelines for landscape or, or site design guidelines for landscape or site design. I'm not going to go through these line by line, but you can see that under section two, there's a variety of different design guidelines that address everything from the building form, orientation, the way it faces, the primary face, the secondary face, the tertiary faces of buildings, how the buildings are articulated, how the roof lines are developed, how we screen undesirable components of mechanical systems, et cetera, how we articulate buildings with fenestration, windows, doors, openings, how we make them desirable, and how we develop them at a scale that's amenable to and supportive of your community. The landscape or the site design portions, again, work in concert with the building design guidelines. There, we talk about site and landscape. So site itself addresses everything from stormwater management and its requirements that you have currently. Introducing more impervious surfaces, or pervious surfaces, rather, trying to reduce impervious surfaces, addressing parking lots so that they are broken down in scale and not as daunting as they could be. Introducing sustainability at the forefront of the overall discussion, as well as public art, trying to describe the value of that and why that should be introduced into projects. We describe plant materials, screening of various components of the site, undesirable pieces primarily, how we address paving, that would be sidewalk, plazas, hardscape, parking itself, and then how we introduce landscaping into the parking lots themselves. So I think what you've got is a very usable tool. As an architect, the intent has always been to make it manageable, to make it usable, to make it friendly to the development community. I think we've done that. And so I think with the adoption of this and the zoning ordinance itself, I think you really have a nice set of tools that will help enhance and support development for the long term in your community. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. Excellent presentation. It's nice to see this document all complete. Any questions for staff or the proponent?
I just have a couple of questions, and I think maybe these are best intended for Ms. Jeremiah. I'm thrilled that we have these. It's been a long time coming, and I think the timing is really good because with transit-oriented development that's going to come along with LRT, and with redevelopment of our community, which I think we're starting to get ripe for some of that within the next five, 10, 15 years, it's wonderful to have this document done. This would go into effect immediately, correct? And it's not an ordinance, so it's not like these are, it's a law that's, people have to do this stuff. These are guidelines, and so it's effective immediately when we pass this?
Assuming you adopt it, yes.
Okay. And you've been working with proponents that have been coming in with different projects over the last year or so with an eye to what our guidelines are in this document, correct?
Quite frankly, we have been basically negotiating to most of these standards, but it is going to be very good to have an actually adopted document to share with the development community so that we're not constantly really trying to explain all of these details at meetings, face-to-face meetings with them, that they can actually take some time and read up and ask questions. So yes, it would be effective immediately. The ordinances, I think, maybe have a little delay on the publication, but the actual design guidelines would be immediate.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom?
Yeah, I just really wanted to say that I think this is a wonderful document. I think it reflects the values of the residents of Eden Prairie and reflected through the council and, of course, the staff. It's very easy to read, easy to follow, but it's also a beautiful document. So I, I'm very, very pleased with it. And I think that anyone coming into the city will really see what we have in mind. So love to have this.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Sure. I move to adopt a resolution adopting the Eden Prairie Design Guidelines document dated November 28, 2016.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes, and thank you for all of your help and guidance and leadership on, on this project for us. We appreciate that. Any other business to bring before the council?
Can I make a quick statement, including, assuming my voice holds up?
Yep.
We've done a lot of work tonight between getting our AAA ratings done, you know, budget, capital improvement, design guidelines, and sort of a culmination of a long debate and lots of work with both council and staff. I want to thank the staff for their great job that they have done with all of these, keeping our budgets in line. We've got great staff. And we have put together, you know, what it really hasn't taken so long tonight, but has taken hours and hours before. But it's all come to being almost faster than I thought it could be. So I do want to say thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Yes. Thank you to staff. All right. Is there a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn the city council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.